Lesson number one. Good morning, everyone. I'd like to declare the meeting open Monday the 8th of April at 12:00 PM. Welcome to all newly elected and returning council members, staff, guests and those watching via livestream. I would like to acknowledge the Kwanmanuca people who are the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet. I would also like to pay respect to those elders past and present, extend that respect to other Indigenous Australians who are present. I would like to remind all that this meeting is being recorded in audio and video as well as being livestreamed online. Councilors are reminded that parliamentary privilege does not extend to this chamber as it does to state and federal parliamentarians. And you are reminded to be cognizant of this in any comments which you may make during the course of this meeting. I would also like to remind councillors to use the microphone when speaking. And for any councillors or officers who are attending virtually, please use the mute button when not speaking. In the event of an evacuation, I would ask that you remain calm and follow my directions. The emergency exit is through the gallery doors to your left and down the stairwell to exit onto Bloomfield Street. I now outline public conduct during meetings, section 8.4 of standing orders. All members of the public present at a meeting must: A) Not without the prior approval of the chairperson make any audio and video recording or take any photographs. B) Remain quiet and not dispute the meeting in any way. C) Not bring into the meeting any signs, placards or items that may cause a hazard or interfere with any person present. D) Be suitably dressed. And E) Turn all mobile devices to silent mode and leave a meeting to take any calls. As chairperson, it is my responsibility to warn a member of the public present at a meeting who is not complying with any of these requirements and may, with or without such warning, require that person to leave a meeting and not return for such period as the chairperson decides. This period may also include future meetings. We now move to section two or item two of the agenda, it's the devotional segment. I'd like to invite Pastor Linda Greve of C3 Redland Bay Church, a member of the Ministers Fellowship, who will lead council in a brief devotional segment.
Good morning. It's wonderful to be here and I thank you for the opportunity to share with you. As I've been thinking about this, I was reminded about in his book, The Seven Habits of Highly Effective People. Author Stephen Cavoy tells a well-known incident about a subway riot. I'd like to recall it to you. I was riding a subway on Sunday morning in New York. People were sitting quietly, reading papers and resting with eyes closed. It was a peaceful scene. Then a man and his children entered the subway car. The man sat next to me and closed his eyes, apparently oblivious, to his children who were running around yelling, throwing things and just being generally annoying, grabbing at people's papers and bumping them. I couldn't believe he could be so insensitive. Eventually, with what felt as an unusual patience, I turned and I said, "Sir, your children are disturbing people. I wonder if you couldn't control them a little bit more?" The man lifted his gaze as if he saw the situation for the first time. He says, "Oh, you're right." He said softly, "I guess, I'm sorry, I guess I should have done something about it. I need to do something about it. We just came from the hospital where their mother died about an hour ago. I don't think I know what to, I don't know what to think and I, I don't know what to feel and I guess they don't know how to handle the situation either." Suddenly, I saw this, I saw things differently. And because I saw things differently, I felt differently, I behaved differently, my irritation quickly vanished. I didn't have to worry about controlling my attitude and my behaviour and my heart filled with compassion. "Your wife just died. I'm so sorry. Can you tell me about it? What can I do to help? Is there anything that I can do?" Everything changed in an instant. Instead of seeing the man as an irresponsible father, he is, he now sees him as a grieving husband. Our perceptions are powerful, but not always the reality. The things, the thing is, when perceptions change, emotion and our behaviours change automatically as well. And this local government council here, we play, that plays a critical role in the delivery of very vital services to our wonderful community. Residents have put their faith in you to represent their needs at the local level. And I know this is a responsibility that none of you take lightly. Being a councilor or a person of influence is not only a privilege and a wonderful opportunity to represent the views of this community while making big decisions in our interests and making a difference in our community. In James 1:5, it says, "If any of us lack wisdom or need knowledge, you should ask of God, who gives generously to all without finding fault, and it will be given to you." So as we're mindful, perceptions, like I said, can be a very powerful thing, but they're not necessarily the reality that we're dealing with. And sometimes we need to take a step back and just look at from the other side. So, that's me in a short little note. I know that a lot of times in life in general, when I perceive things to be a certain way and then I've actually taken a moment, I've realised it's purely my perception, not actually the reality. So, I'd like to commit you all into prayer. Father, I just thank you that you are an amazing God and you have everything under control. I thank you, Lord, that your word is very clear about asking for wisdom, asking for guidance, Lord, and that you give liberty to all who ask. So, Father, today, as the council come together, the new council, the new mayor, the councillors have been round for a while, Father, I thank you, Lord, that you pour upon them your wisdom, your peace and your grace as they enter into this new season together, Lord, that they can perceive and they can make decisions based on the reality of what is required and what is needed across this great city of ours. And I thank you for them, each and every one of them, that have put their hand up to serve us as a community. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you. We now move to agenda item number three, declaration of the poll. In accordance with section 100 of the Local Government Electoral Act 2011, the returning officer Paul Sutton gave notice of the final result of all polls for the election of mayor and councillors of Division 1 through 10 of Redland City Council following the local government election held on the 16th of March 2024. It is my pleasure to announce the new council. Councillor Joss Mitchell, Mayor of Redland City. Councillor Wendy Boglari, councillor Division 1. Councillor Peter Mitchell, councillor Division 2. Councillor Paul Gole, councillor Division 3. Councillor Lance Hewlett, councillor Division 4. Councillor Shane Rendles, councillor Division 5. Councillor Julie Tolty, councillor Division 6. Councillor Rowan Mackenzie, councillor Division 7. Councillor Tracy Hughes, councillor Division 8. Councillor Jason Colley, councillor Division 9. And councillor Paul Bishop, councillor Division 10. I congratulate you all on your election as Redland City councillors. Agenda item number four, declaration of office. Before any person can act as councillor of a local government, they are required to make a declaration of office in accordance with section 169 of the Local Government Act 2009. The declaration of office was taken before the chief executive officer at the Redland Performing Arts Centre earlier today, 8th of April 2024. Now to agenda item number five, and I've got some words to say. So, good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to this, my first meeting and the first meeting for the new council. And congratulations once again to all of my fellow councillors for your election and re-election to Redland City Council. I'd like to thank everyone for their decision to seek, to represent and continue representing our community. And for some, I know that has been longstanding. Your diligence and dedication to our community has, has gone over years, so I thank you. It is no mean feat to be sitting around this table and we all bring a range of knowledge and skills to share. Thank you to the staff members who work to deliver for our city every day. Having worked on the other side of the table, I know the commitment it takes to deliver projects and programmes for our community. And valuing our staff and that corporate knowledge they build upon is an important aspect of working together effectively. Similarly, respect for the office of the elected representatives ensures we have the voice of our community represented in council business. Our Redland community is amazing. I spent 14 months out in the community every single day, bar five, and we are surrounded by supportive and uplifting people who have a vast amount of expertise. They are ready and willing to share it. Our collective council is here to work for our community and it's not an easy undertaking, as many know. It is important to acknowledge the sheer volume of work that has been done by staff and councillors previously to deliver our services and infrastructure continuously. Obviously, like everything in life, there are aspects of council's function that can be improved. And with every iteration of the elected council, which is the voice of the community, that is the goal. With that in mind, it is my greatest wish that we all work together to do what our community has elected us to do, to ensure the functions of council are met in the best possible way. And we provide the strategic direction with our community's input that will assist our local government area to manage and accommodate necessary growth and innovation while balancing and protecting the lifestyle we so love. I am looking forward to working with everyone to ensure we get a good, good outcomes across our local government area during this term. Thank you to our community, thank you to the staff members and thank you to the elected councillors for being part of Redland City Council. And we have no leave of absence as advised, so I move to item seven, declaration of prescribed conflict of interest and declarable conflict of interests. Councillors are reminded of their responsibilities in relation to councillors prescribed conflict of interest and declarable conflict of interest at a meeting. Details of these responsibilities are also outlined in the agenda. Please be reminded that all interests need to be declared at a statutory meeting of council. This means any prescribed or declarable conflict of interest relating to an item being discussed at a non-statutory meeting needs to be declared at the general or special meeting preceding the non-statutory meeting or workshop. A potential list of items to be discussed at any non-statutory meetings are made available to councillors with each workshop agenda before the preceding general meeting so that this can be achieved. These declarations can also be made at any time throughout the meeting and today we have none advised. May I have a mover and a second for that motion? Oh, don't need, don't need to, sorry. Now we move to reports to council, agenda item number 8.1, the appointment of deputy mayor. I now call for nominations for the position of deputy mayor. Councillor Wendy Boglari.
Madam Mayor, before we move to the actual nomination of councillors, I would like to ask councillors if we would be happy to change to option one. Because as the motion stands, whoever gets voted in as deputy mayor will be that deputy mayor for four years. And I think it is actually a, it's up until... Am I correct in that? 2026? Sorry, I'm sorry. That's fine. And are we just doing nominations now?
Yes.
I'd actually like to nominate Paul Bishop for deputy mayor.
And are there any, oh, sorry. Are there any other nominations?
Sorry, Chair, just on what councillor Boglari was saying, the option one. Are you, are you saying you want to have that, Wendy, or not? I'm just a bit confused at what you're asking.
I wanted it for two years. Which is the recommendation. I misread it, sorry.
So you've got option two as well, so that's one year as well, is it?
Yep, option two was one year.
Yep.
But option one is the two years.
I asked the CEO to speak to this issue through me.
Yeah, good morning councillors and congratulations again on all of our behalf. So what you see in front of you is a report that's got a few options. One is to appoint a councillor as a deputy mayor up until the general meeting date in April 26, which is two years. The second option is for one year, so that takes you to April 24. And the third option is for the full four. The first step in this is to, is to seek nominations before there's a mover and a second. So if there's more than one nomination for deputy mayor, we will need to work through how that is, how that is resolved. There are two ways to resolve if there's more than one nomination. But at the moment, we only have one nomination, but I noticed there was another hand up with councillor Mitchell.
Councillor Mitchell.
Yes, I'd like to nominate councillor Julie Tolty as deputy mayor. I'd like to be able to speak to it at some point, whether that's now... So, do you want, are there any more nominations I think would be worth asking, Madam Mayor?
Councillor Gole.
Yeah, thanks, Madam Chair. I'd like to nominate councillor Tracy Hughes. Thank you.
So councillors, is that, that's the... I'm just making sure there are no more nominations through you, Madam Mayor.
Are there any other nominations? We have three nominations.
So if there are three nominations and the councillors are willing to accept those nominations, there needs to be a process by which you now determine who will be the deputy mayor.
So, are the, are the... Are the councillors that have been nominated willing to accept those nominations?
Yes, I will accept and I'm very grateful and flattered to be nominated. Thank you.
Councillor Hughes.
Thank you. I will accept. Thank you.
And councillor...
I accept. Thank you.
Councillor Tolty.
So through you, Madam Mayor, the way to resolve this is, there's a couple of ways. What has been done in the past when there's more than one nomination is to run a ballot, which can be run and then I can read the results of that ballot, which then forms the motion for a deputy mayor to be, be voted on by council. Alternatively, you can run a process of movers and seconders for each individual nominee. And by exhaustion, you'll end up with one, one deputy mayor. But we have, this council has in the past run a ballot. And then the results of that ballot have been called by Tony who will run that ballot and I can call the result of that ballot.
Councillor Tolty.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd just like to suggest that we stay with the ballot. It's, it's a much less fraught system. Do we need a motion to suspend standing orders whilst we do this?
All right. So I propose that we now conduct a secret ballot and we suspend standing orders while we...
It will adjourn, so we need a mover and a second.
All right, we'll now adjourn the meeting, seeking a mover and a second, councillor Bishop moving, councillor Rowan Mackenzie seconding.
All those in favour?
All those in favour. Carrie, thank you.
We need a mover and a second to resume.
We're now resuming the meeting. I need a mover and a second. Councillor Wendy Boglari, councillor, sorry, Paul Bishop.
And, and vote.
And I put the motion... Sorry, put the, put, sorry, to, to return to the, from, return.
So we adjourn, we adjourn the meeting, councillors. And now we're bringing the meeting back into public session.
So is that unanimous? Sorry, can I have a show of hands again? Carrie unanimously.
Thank you. The results of the ballot for deputy mayor. Councillor Tolty with seven, councillor Hughes with one, councillor Bishop with three. So councillor Tolty, I'm suggesting is now the nominee for deputy mayor. And that then becomes the motion. And the motion, I'm assuming, is for, for a councillor now to call for a motion for option, one of these options, to nominate for the position of deputy mayor, councillor Tolty.
Now I have a mover and a second, councillor Mitchell, councillor Rowan Mackenzie, thank you. Show of hands. Oh, sorry, did you want to speak to a councillor Mitchell? That is the motion.
So it says up to April 2026, which is option one out of the report.
Do you want to speak to that?
Yes, I'm happy to speak for a few minutes. I was thinking of this was the pre, pre pitch, but I'll use it as, as the speak to. I'm, I'm pleased to, to nominate councillor Julie Tolty as deputy mayor and hopefully that will be accepted in this resolution. I think the importance of the continuity of skills and experience in a period of great disruption is why I sought to nominate councillor Tolty. I think this will assist the new mayor and the councillor cohort. We've got two, two new very capable councillors sitting out here on that chair and of course, a, a new mayor. We also lost a fair bit of experience in ex-mayor Karen Williams. And we had councillor Mark Edwards, who is much, much appreciated with his wisdom in this room as well. So, my view, the deputy mayor position is a very crucial one for the group and, and the city. I think it should actually be valued much more highly than perhaps it has been in the past in improving that collaboration. And I hope, and I do have great trust in councillor Tolty, given how she stepped up in the last, particularly I think the last 12 months of last terms and some pretty challenging times showed a very capable deputy mayor. So I think, I think the two-year period is, is right because a lot of water will go in the bridge in two years. So, so thank you and I'm, I'm pleased to put forward this motion, of course.
Hello, is there a speaker against? Councillor Gole.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I'm not speaking against the nominee. What I'm speaking against is the two-year timeframe. I think it's imperative that every councillor has the option... I think it's imperative that every councillor has the opportunity to have the experience of being a deputy mayor. And so therefore I'd like to actually, if, if this is allowable, to change the motion. So it's actually to twenty twenty five, please.
That's different, we have to put this to the vote and it votes now.
So that it's one year.
So I'll require a second for that motion, councillor Boglari. Thank you.
I thought we had to vote on a live motion on the floor before we could relate to change it.
This is an amendment to the motion. So there's a live motion to nominate councillor Julie Tolty as deputy mayor for the period up to April twenty twenty six. Councillor Golly has moved an amended motion to appoint the deputy mayor for a period up to April, the general meeting in April twenty twenty five. You'll need a second for that, which I think you got from councillor Boglari. And then you need a vote now, Madam Mayor, on whether or not that motion becomes the motion. So I'm assuming it's, sorry councillor Boglari, I'm assuming councillor Golly that your motion is still to resolve to appoint Julie Tolty as a result of the ballot for a period of now, it's one year.
Yes, that's correct, and it's on, on the grounds of building the professionalism of all councillors. If, you know what I mean, we did have that previously, Madam Chair.
It was the second, councillor Boglari, thank you, now you need a vote on that, Madam Mayor.
All right.
Ah, yes, you can have a speaker for and against, yes.
Is there a speaker for the amended motion? Sorry, speaker against, speaker against the amended motion, councillor Mitchell.
Yeah, I'll speak against that because I think to, to lock it in may be a mistake. We are, as a group, able to bring back the position of deputy mayor at any time. So at any time, and that's on the position, that was the position I'd taken. I don't see any reason to change that. I think two years sends a strong signal that we're looking for, for some stability. And if we are working brilliantly and as a group, once we move into that, I don't think a year's long enough. It's a very quick first year councillors, very quick first year. And the fact that we can bring it back at any time doesn't preclude the fact that maybe a year, but doesn't lock us in, thank you.
Speaker's for, councillor Bishop.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I'd also like to take the opportunity to thank councillor Boglari for the nomination and also councillor Golly for suggesting a one-year term. We do have some councillors who have been in their fifth term, fourth term, and, and there are others who have a wealth of experience. I believe we are in this city at a time when the most important message we need to send is to build collegiality and to share the workload. And I think the opportunity to review this after a year. I, I do understand that some people feel the need to keep the consistency of the former deputy mayor to be nominated this year. But I think a one-year period is time for us to build trust and respect and in our community and amongst ourselves. So I do think that a one-year term is, would be suggested and, and recommended. So I'll, I'll leave it at that, thank you at this point.
Thank you, councillor Bishop, any other speakers against? Speaker for, sorry, I lost track of myself. All right, we'll now table vote, take a vote. Voting, voting on the, the motion, the amended motion?
Voting to make the amended motion, the motion.
So we're now voting to make the amended motion, the motion, so... Put that to the vote.
Perhaps?
Can we just pause for a moment, please?
So for those councillors looking a bit confused, if this goes down, we return...
Excuse me, Julie, the mayor is the chair. Then let the mayor chair. She's busy, it's fine, you don't need to have an opinion.
Could we please take a moment while we just have a discussion, thank you. All right, thank you, we're now taking a vote on the amended motion. So those in favour of the amended motion becoming the motion? Thank you councillor Boglari, councillor Golly, councillor Hewlett, councillor Hughes and councillor Bishop. Those against? Thank you councillor Mitchell, councillor Rendles, councillor Tolty, councillor Mackenzie and councillor Golly. Oh, sorry, and myself, I missed myself at the fore, it's going to take a while, folks. So I'm, I'm voting for the amended motion. Councillor Joss Mitchell. So can we, yeah, maybe if we do that again, vote those in favour of the motion, amended motion becoming the motion? So councillor Joss Mitchell, councillor Wendy Boglari, councillor Paul Golly, councillor Lance Hewlett, councillor Paul Bishop. Sorry, and, sorry, and councillor Tracy Hughes. And those against? Councillor Peter Mitchell, councillor Shane Rendles, councillor Julie Tolty, councillor Rowan Mackenzie, councillor Jason Golly. The motion is carried.
I'm looking to Tony here to make sure I get this right. So now the motion is to appoint councillor Julie Tolty as deputy mayor for a period up to the day of the general meeting to be held April twenty twenty five.
So mover and a second, councillor Rowan Mackenzie. Sorry, councillor Golly and councillor Boglari, and we're now putting that to the vote. Those in favour? Councillor Peter Mitchell, councillor Paul Golly, councillor Shane Rendles, councillor Julie Tolty, councillor Rowan Mackenzie, councillor Tracy Hughes, councillor Jason Golly and councillor Paul Bishop. And those against? Councillor Wendy Boglari, councillor Lance Hewlett. Oh, sorry, councillor, oh, I'd be against. Councillor Joss Mitchell.
Excuse me, what? We just voted on that motion to secure it, right? So you guys voted for the year and then you voted against the year.
I, I, I agreed with the year, but I believe someone else should have had a turn at being deputy mayor.
Okay, I understand, thank you.
That is now carried. And councillor Julie Tolty is now deputy mayor, congratulations. So we now move to item eight point two, council meeting, meeting schedule for twenty twenty four. Can I have a mover and second for item eight point two? Moved by councillor Hughes, seconded by councillor Mitchell, put that to the vote. Oh, sorry, councillor Hughes, speakers for and against councillor Hughes?
Thank you, Mayor, in moving this motion. I'd just like to flag that there has been two scheduled changes to the original dates, that being for next week, the seventeenth of April, proposed move to the eighteenth of April, that's one day from the Wednesday to the Thursday. And the general meeting scheduled for the twenty-third of October is proposed to be moved forward one week to the sixteenth of October. There's an LGAQ conference on that week, the twenty-third, that many of the councillors would like to attend. Thank you.
Thank you. Any speakers against? Councillor Golly.
Madam Chair, also on the eighteenth of April, when that was first proposed, I did write back and ask, have councillors got commitments to schools etcetera for ANZAC Day? What takes precedent? Because we're actually invited... Yeah, because we've actually been invited as guests to speak at some of these events. So we're now going to...
Councillor, I would consider that the general meeting would take precedence over any school, school appointments. It's an obligation.
But it's for ANZAC.
Uh, change to the motion, please, Madam Chair? Well, I was going to suggest back in hour, but yeah.
So what's the, what's the change, what's the proposal councillor?
Well, I was just going to suggest on Thursday, the eighteenth, rather than starting at nine thirty, if councillors have commitments to attend ANZAC day ceremonies, ANZAC ceremonies at their schools, they're generally over by ten o'clock. So if we just move the meeting from nine thirty to ten thirty, that allows councillors to do both and allows the, the mayor to attend on the Wednesday as well. So I was just going to propose a, a change to the schedule there.
Councillors, it's been brought to my attention that this agenda was published last week and no comment has been made until now. So perhaps we proceed as, as planned. It has been, it has, it has been a published agenda for over a week.
Well, it's, it's been moved and seconded, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Hughes.
The motion that we just took previously for the deputy mayor had been moved and seconded. And then from the floor councillor Golly moved an amendment. And I believe councillor Tolty is following the same procedure.
Yeah, I was just wondering what specifically the moved amendment is. Because there were some conjectures to whether or not ten o'clock was okay or not, so...
So perhaps we can take a moment, councillor Tolty, just to paraphrase, you've, you've proposed that the meeting just be moved back to ten o'clock. Perhaps if everyone can then check their calendars and just see if they do have any proposed invitations from schools for that morning? Councillor Golly.
Yeah, thanks, Madam Chair, so in my specific invitations, I actually said to the schools, I can't commit yet until I know what we're actually doing. We hadn't been sworn in, nothing had actually been finalised. So it was a matter of giving this week to actually get back to those schools to say yea or nay. And I did respond in an email to the CEO's office and said, has anyone checked calendars for ANZAC Day? So we need to, I'm quite happy to move the timings out to say ten thirty, eleven o'clock. That should finalise all school activities and then we can come and do the, the general meeting.
Sorry councillor Hill.
I got them before the election, I got them before the election.
It's rare that you have ANZAC day ceremonies on the eighteenth, that's far before ANZAC day, like, or it's following me normally.
Happy to withdraw the motion, Madam Chair.
All right, just, just quickly, do I have, do I have any indication of how many people have received invitations? Or if that's going to, no, midpoint, all right. Councillor Tolty, if you're happy, then, yeah, remove that. So we are back to the original, which is... Which is moved by councillor Hughes and seconded by councillor Mitchell. Now put that to the vote. And it's the unanimous vote, carried unanimously, thank you. Now we move to item eight point three, the statutory appointment and nomination of chair to the local disaster management group. Can I have a mover and a second for item eight point three? Moved by councillor Julie Tolty, moved by, seconded by councillor Wendy Boglari. And I put that motion, oh, sorry, sorry, does councillor Tolty want to speak to that motion?
Thank you, Madam Chair, so as the deputy chair of the disaster management group, I'm happy to move that as our new mayor, you will obviously sit in the chair of the disaster management group and, and look forward to working with you in that position.
Thank you councillor Tolty, any speakers against? No, I now put that motion to, I've now put that motion... Carried unanimously, oh, no, sorry. Councillors Boglari, Mitchell, Golly, Hewlett, Rendles, Tolty, Hughes, Golly, Bishop and Mitchell. Those against councillor Mackenzie. Motion's carried. Thank you to everyone for bearing with me through that process. I now declare this meeting closed at twelve forty-two AM on the eighth of April twenty twenty four.